And I better turn my mic on. So I want to express my appreciation to all of you for coming out to our board meeting. This is Thursday, March 21st. It's our regular monthly meeting. And at this time, I would like to ask you to stand for a moment of silence. Amen. You may be seated. At this time, Dr. Bracy, will you introduce the students that will be leading us in the pledge and in our statement?
Good evening.
And welcome to our March 21st meeting. At this time, we will have our pledge and statement. With us this evening, we have students and representatives from Churchland High School, home of the Truckers, welcome this evening. And the students that will be presenting this evening are Alexander Moody and Sadaya Cox. If the two of you will come down and I will read some of the bio on the two of you. Alexander is a junior at Churchland High School. His current GPA is 4.169. Yes. Alex takes advantage of many opportunities available to him and is very involved as a student at Churchland High School. He is the vice president of his junior class and currently ranks number six in the class. He is a member of many clubs, including Model UN, National Honor Society, English National Honor Society, Student Council Association, and he also is a junior marshal. He has been to many conferences, including the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference, to improve his leadership skills, to help others around him. In his spare time, he plays soccer for Churchland High School, where he's the captain of the varsity soccer team. He also plays volleyball for the school. Alex volunteers in his community with opportunities involving sports and mentoring young teens. After high school, he would like to pursue a career playing soccer in college and get a four-year degree in pre-med. After college, Alex wants to go to med school and pursue his dream of becoming a sports medicine doctor. Alex's parents are Terry and Melody Moody, and if they are present, will they stand at this time and be recognized? Thank you very much. Our next student, Sadaya Cox, is a senior at Churchland High School. Her GPA is currently 4.38. Ranking her as valedictorian of her class. She participates in a number of extracurricular activities at Churchland High School. She is a member of the National Honor Society, president of the Gay-Straight Alliance, was the lead delegate for Model UN, captain of the Scholastic Bowl Team, and the PR manager for Robotics. She has traveled with the highly successful Royal Robotics team to compete in two world championships over the past two years, one in St. Louis and one in Detroit. Sadaya is a hard worker, whose favorite community service activity is tutoring elementary schoolers in math. After high school, she plans on majoring in mathematics while pursuing her four-year degree with an eventual goal of becoming a mathematician or a mathematics professor. Sadaya has been honored with a number of awards, including being a semifinalist for the Point Scholarship, and a finalist for the National Merit Scholarship, and a finalist for the First Robotics Dean's List Award. She has received offers to attend the University of Chicago, Hampton University, ODU, and has been offered a full academic scholarship to the College of Wilmington Mary. Congratulations. Sadaya's parents are Matthew and Keisha Cox, and if they are here, will you please stand and be recognized at this time? And also representing Churchland High School, we have the principal, Mr. Sean Malachi. Mr. Malachi, will you stand? I don't know if any other administrators are present. Will you all please stand at this time? And any other members of the Trucker staff, will you please stand and be recognized as well? We're pleased to have you all with us this evening. So at this time, I will turn it over to Alexander for the pledge.
Is this on?
Yes.
Everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. And on behalf of the Churchland High School faculty and staff, we would like to present you with a token of our appreciation.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You can lift that up. Yeah.
Can I open it now?
We're ready for the statement. Sadaya?
Thank you. Had I known we all would have been wearing Royal Robotics shirt, I would have worn mine. No one gave me that memo, though.
I didn't get it either, Sadaya, so.
Thank you.
I don't even have one, so I'm gonna talk to Mr. Malachi about that after this.
There you go. All right. I'm glad to be here. After the introduction, I don't really feel like introducing myself, but I am Sadaya Cox from Churchland High School. We have about 1,400 students and we're fully accredited, and I think this is due to three factors that I can't overlook: our administrative team, led by Mr. Malachi, our amazing teachers and staff, and our dedication in doing things the Trucker way through working together, accepting responsibility, and demonstrating a yes-I-can attitude. I want to give a quick overlook about all the things that are going on at Churchland High School, just because I truly believe we're a beautiful school, and all the things that we do every day is really fit for a full speech in and of itself, but I can't write that many speeches. Our athletics and arts programs have been performing beautifully over the past year. Our football team made it to regionals, our basketball team and wrestling teams go to -- excuse me. Our basketball team traveled to states, and many of our track and wrestling competitors competed and placed in the state championships. In terms of the arts, I can personally attest to how well our arts program is going -- growing, excuse me. I was a part of the magnet program for insurance and music for two years. I did a band as an extracurricular for three, so I really do enjoy the great growth we've had in the arts program. Excuse me, I can't really see my speech. We've had students place in the Seawall Art Show, do a collaborative project with the local businesses, and paint murals in the history hallway that will improve our curriculum. It's actually really cool, you should go see it. Our annual African-American History Month program, where students of both art and history both collaborated to put on a spectacular performance, happened twice, once for just our students and once for parents and teachers to come attend. In terms of the music departments, orchestra got a superior rating at districts. Chorus had four kids make it to the all-state chorus, and both the concert and marching bands have performed greatly at a multitude of events. I've had the honor of taking a wide variety of the classes at Churchland High School, and they have been ever-expanding since I personally joined my freshman year. We have classes that go hand-in-hand with the first college program, so I took two DE classes for college credit, and then many, many kids from the senior class go to TCC their second semester. I assure you, you know that doesn't need defining, but it is a really great program. I'm glad we have the opportunity to do that, especially considering the rising cost of college tuition. In addition, the early college program for kids who aren't in 12th grade to get their associate's degree when they graduate is an amazing program. I personally didn't have the ability to join it, but I'm so glad for all the kids who did, especially because the program is growing a lot more in the past couple of years. We have a new VR lab upstairs, which is so good. It is so cool. I'm sorry. It is really cool. Some of our unique classes include horticulture, graphic design, and cybersecurity, and next year we'll be getting an anatomy class, which I assure Alex will take, considering he wants to be pre-med. But my area of expertise is definitely in the extracurriculars at Churchland High School. All students are encouraged to get involved in activity, whether it's volunteering, athletics, or clubs. Our clubs cover a variety of interests, from professional development through DECA or FBLA, community involvement through Operation Smile, their recycling club, or something fun like Step Team or the Boxing Club. ROT's drill team and their rifle team have worked hard to place in many of their competitions as well, even traveling to competition in Atlanta, where they placed very well. As for the clubs I'm a part of, Robotics has made it to the regional competition, doing very well at our two district competitions. I hope, I don't know the official numbers yet, but writing it in there, speaking it to existence. And our Model UN team went to two conferences and authored many papers. Our scholastical team also went to the regional competitions, we placed fourth, so unfortunately no trophy, but next year maybe. If I were to have my pick of high schools, there's no way I would pick any other school besides Churchland. No offense to Norcom or Wilson, but it is the best school. The wealth of extracurriculars they've offered me have not only given me a wealth of new experiences to better myself in my education, but they've given me new opportunities to do even better things. I'm hopefully getting a job this summer with someone who's seen my work on the robotics team, and it'll be in STEM, so it'll give me a lot more experience to start doing what I actually need to do. I don't know where I am. It's given me a creative way to spend my time that isn't sitting around doing nothing every day. A diverse course load has allowed me to take the classes I want to take on a variety of subjects, and has pushed me toward a career path that I'm excited about. It's allowed me to explore other options, learn new ways of thinking, and the great athletics and arts programs have gotten many students involved in something they can be proud of, which fills us all with school spirit. I'm excited to see how much Churchland High School grows after I leave, and I am 100% sure in how much I love this great school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Go ahead, just.
Great presentation, both of you. You are an asset to your school and to your city. Sadaya was the keynote speaker at the Starbase Community Partners Breakfast this past year, and that's where I first heard her speak, so she's very passionate about STEM. And coming out to, several board members made it out to, even board members without the shirts, made it out to the robotics competition this past weekend at Churchland High School, so we wish the Royal Robotics all the luck in the world, and we support you. And if you could just take one quick minute and talk a little bit about Starbase, because that is something that Portsmouth Public Schools offers, and we need to make sure that we protect those programs that are causing you to have the passion that you're having. So we want to make sure that we encourage everybody to understand we need to protect those programs, which means we need to make sure that we're asking for proper funding so that we can maintain these programs. Share a little bit about Starbase, if you don't mind, please.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to point out that Portsmouth has one of the largest STEM programs, I would say, not in terms of like lateral growth, but in terms of going from K to 12, which I think is very important. Because when I moved here in the third grade, of course, I didn't know what I wanted to do, I was eight years old, but Churchland, not Churchland, excuse me, Churchland Academy, but Portsmouth did a really good job of allowing me to try new things, and that did include the Starbase program, where we went over to Starbase, it was like a field trip for a week, and we did, you know, cool experiments. And what I think that really gave me a basis for is like scientific thinking and showing me that I had like more options. Like just because I was young didn't mean I couldn't actually start exploring what I wanted to do. And I specifically remember in Arrow Base, so it's a sixth-grade program, we built a rocket, and I was very into designing like what exactly it should look like and how much drag it needed to have. I don't know what drag is. I didn't, but I thought I did. And the teachers did support me, and they pushed me towards that kind of engineering design and critical thought that I would need going into high school. I really do recommend the Starbase program, especially because like all the kids love it. They like, you know, bringing their rockets home, showing their parents, getting to draw and shooting them up into the sky. And what they don't really realize is that those skills stay with them until they reach high school. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Mr. Lamb?
And both of you, thank you for being here. I should, I must feel like a shout-out. With the GPAs that both of you have, I feel like a presence of wow. So good luck in all future endeavors and with whatever drugs you do. Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Lamb will bring the mission statement, please.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, sir. Board members, would you please make your attendance by electronic vote? Madam Clerk? Ms. Williams is here, so. Madam Clerk?
All members are present.
Thank you. The next item is the consideration of the agenda for tonight. There's one exception, 3.8, the student representative will not be here, so there will be no report. This is electronic vote. Board members, would you please?
Need a motion.
Oh, that, sorry. Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Ms. Hines, your light popped up.
Wrong, love you. My apologies. I just got excited.
All right. At this time, we're gonna deviate just a little bit, and Reverend Patillo, Dr. Bracy, if you will. I'll need to go first, but I'll. And then I'm gonna ask the rest of the board members if you would come and come down here. You know, we already had the cake, but on behalf of the board. Let's see. On behalf of the board, we just wanted to express our deepest, well, I don't want to say sympathy because we're losing you, but you're going to, you're going to something that for you is going to be better for your family, and we understand it, but we are gonna miss the heck out of you because you have done such an awesome job for Portsmouth. But this is just in recognition of outstanding service presented to Sharice M. Newsome, and appreciation for your tireless, and I mean, underline the word, tireless dedication to Portsmouth Public Schools. It's the honorable members of the school board, and we have our names on them. Dr. Bracy's the superintendent Thursday, March 21st, and I just want to make this presentation to you with a lot of sadness, but a joy for you because you have been a joy to us.
Thank you.
And God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you can get in the middle.
I will.
If you get in the middle, then we can all get. Kathy, you're gonna take the picture. And at this time, at this time, I'd like to, while we're getting a picture, I'd like to introduce Kathy O'Hara. She is with Hunter Communications, and she's going to be interim until we hire a full-time. And welcome back. Thank you.
Everybody in on my Chinese. And about my squeeze in, yes.
I'm shorter than you, so I gotta measure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. It's a PR person. Normally, I'm not lost for words.
No, you're not.
So I just want to thank you all for your devotion to the students and families and staff members of Portsmouth Public Schools. As many of you know, my mom was an educator for 40 years in Norfolk, although she's a proud Norcom grad, and working in education has fulfilled one of my utmost passions. I admire you and the work that you do, as well as my colleagues. For every parent, every community member here, please continue to support public education. It is a great equalizer, and it sets our children up for success in life and everything they do. So I am honored, I am humbled, and I thank you. And I'll still be advocating for you just on the other side of the water.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Sharice, I was gonna do it later, but I'll go ahead and say my piece to you now. When you, you know, I got excited when you said that you would come to work with us in Portsmouth Public Schools, and a lot of people think I was excited because I was pulling you away from the palette, from writing nice articles about us. But the public relations, community, communications director and superintendent have a special relationship. I mean, you are definitely someone that I have to interact with every day. You know, I have to be sensitive about what I respond to. If you advise me not to, I have to trust you on that, and over the course of the two and a half years, you know, we formed a great bond. Now, I will truly miss you, truly, because I know I could call you at any time of the night, as you did with me as well. So I wish you the best of luck. I know you're making this decision because it's best for you and your family and your career. You're young, so there are a lot of opportunities out there, so I don't blame you one bit for taking advantage of it. And maybe someday down the road, our paths will cross again. So I'm looking forward to, of course, keeping in contact with you. You know, we'll set up a time when we meet from time to time to have lunch and just catch up, because not only were we working colleagues, but we established a good friendship as well. So thank you, Sharice. I appreciate it.
And Sharice, we can always go back to the Renaissance where all this began, if you remember. Ms. Williams? All right. Moving on.
Chairman Parent.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Atkinson. Excuse me.
Chairman Parent, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move 7.1 and 7.2 up from in place of 4.1. Okay. Second?
Motion's been made, and second, that we move 7.1 and second, 7.2 for the next item, right? Okay. All right. Ms. Williams?
Thank you.
Yes, I simply want to say and to clarify, since my fellow board member said, "That didn't sound right," about how Sharice and you met at the Renaissance?
Oh.
Actually, I just clarified that it was the chair.
Over lunch, please. Come on.
The chairman, the vice chair, Dr. Bracy, and Sharice had lunch.
Yes, we did.
And she was working on a story for the school system. And so that's when we said, "Oh, Sharice would be wonderful in Portsmouth Public Schools." So just want to clear, I want to get you out of trouble, huh? Mr. Chairman.
Sharice, I will never live this one down. Oh, brother. Let's move on, please.
We gotta vote.
Oh, Mr. Lamb, don't hit me now. Go ahead.
No, I won't hit you, and gosh, Ms. Williams, I don't have a story to top that at all.
Wait a minute. Hold on just a minute. We've got to vote on the.
That's fine.
All right. Board members, please vote.
It's not in here.
Oh, okay. All right. Boys vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Say, Sharice, you've got us all upset here. Now.
Yes, and again, I was gonna say, I cannot top a story like that. Don't intend to, but I do just want to say to Sharice, it's been a pleasure working with you. I know that our first engagement was with the PTA, walking in the different neighborhoods, and I think we formally met over by Lakeview Elementary. And I remember that day distinctly, not because of you per se, but I've never told you this, but you were walking in high heels. And I was absolutely impressed that this woman is out here knocking on doors and taking pictures, and I'm stuck on, "How is she staying up with me in high heels?" So you have been an asset, but not only that, though, your heart has been in everything that you have accomplished, that you've tried to bring about, and so you'll be sorely missed, but I just wanted to let you know it's been a privilege and an honor working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. All right. At this time, we will now move to 7.1, IC Norcom High School Class III State Champions. Dr. Bracy?
Take out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair. We're excited to have here tonight with us Dr. Leguna Foster, principal of IC Norcom High School, and Coach Jackson, his athletic director, for special recognitions.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good evening, Dr. Bracy. School Board Chairman, Mr. Parent.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, Mr. Patillo, and board members. I have the proud privilege of introducing some unique student athletes from IC Norcom High School, and we're very honored to have this opportunity. We thank you for recognizing not only their athletic skills, but know them as student athletes. Our first Class III State Champion is Jasmine Gilliam. If you give her a round of applause, please come forward. If her parents are here, please stand. That's her mother and her grandmother. All right. Ms. Gilliam is a state champion. Her event is the girls' 55-meter hurdles with a championship time of 8.52, and that is a state record, so congratulations, man. Our next state champion, Class III, is Thomas White. Mr. White's event is the boys' triple jump with a championship leap of 46 feet, 11 and one-half inches.
Wow. Wow. Okay? And if his father would please stand?
Thank you, sir.
That's a long, that's a long jump.
Our next championship is Karan Pruti. Pruti? Pruti, I'm sorry. Mr. Pruti's event is the boys' 55-meter DAS with a championship time of 6.53 seconds. Congratulations. And again, if his father could please stand? We have a boys' 4x200-meter championship team encompassing Karan Pruti, Mr. Dunlap, have you arrived yet?
Yes.
All right, please come forward.
All right, please come forward. Jamari Gray. Maurice, come forward. Our boys' 4x200-meter relay's time is 1:33 seconds and 28, so congratulations, gentlemen.
Can we get these pictures at the end?
And if their parents could please stand of our boys' relay team.
Okay, we have the students all...
All athletes, please go forward.
Yes, please.
All athletes, please come forward to the front. How far are you, right here or right up here, facing this way? All right, this way. And before we take that picture, these, as student athletes, could not have done this without the leadership of their coach, and their coach is Ms. Lisa Carnes. Let's give her a round of applause.
Where's the coach? Put me in the game, coach.
Thank you all very much.
Once again, congratulations to the Greyhounds. We're also very pleased to share that we have state champions from Churchland High School, and to introduce those championship truckers, I welcome to the podium Mr. Sean Malachi, the principal, and Mr. Michael Whittington, the athletic director.
All right.
Good evening. First, I do want to recognize Coach Whittington. This is his second and a half year, and we've seen some tremendous turnarounds in our athletics program, and a lot of that does go to him. So thank you, Coach Whittington, for being here. We have two state champions in girls' track. First, I'll call up Leila Anderson. Leila participated in the 2019 VHSL Class IV State Indoor Track Championship in Salem, Virginia, where she took home two state championships. Leila won the 55-meter dash in a time of 7.10. She would return later in the day to win the 300-meter dash, running 41.34, to win her second state championship on the afternoon. We're so proud of Leila, and if her parents are here, they could please stand. Our second state champion is a senior, Amia Williams. Amia also participated in the Class IV Indoor State Championship in Salem, Virginia, where she took first place in the shot put. Her throw was 41 feet, 1/2 inch, which won the competition by over three feet. She is a senior, as I said. She's looking to continue her track career in college next year and will decide in the near future where she will attend. She is the first female thrower in school history to win a state title, Amia Williams, and if her parents are here, they could please stand to be recognized. And I too would like to recognize our track coaches, who have, again, done a tremendous job. We have several of them here, but the coaches are Amani Harper, Quentin Harper, Terry Allen, Larisse Morales, and Leroy Smith, and we want to recognize them as well. Come on, stand up, guys.
We need them to come up so we can get a picture.
Congratulations again to Churchland High School, as well as IC Norcom High School. The principals recognize their athletic directors because that's where it begins to making sure that the proper foundation is in place. So I'd like to give a special thanks to the athletic directors to both schools, and also to our citywide athletic director, Coach Pew, who's, I don't know, did he make it tonight? I know he was gonna try to, but if not, definitely want to recognize him, because Coach Whittington, Coach Jackson are relatively new in their roles at the schools, and we can see the success that the schools are having, as well as Coach Pew, who's probably in his second year or so as citywide athletic director. So there are a lot of great things going on on the athletic side, and as Dr. Foster said, they're truly student athletes. So I want to thank you all for what you're doing, bringing great recognition to your schools and to the city, and we're proud of you, and I want to say thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. The school board's proposed FY 2019-20 operating budget. Dr. Bracy?
The operating budget has been made available to the public by way of our website, as well as a printed copy in our school division office. So if there are any comments at this time regarding the fiscal year 2019-20 budget, please come to the podium at this time.
Would anyone like to speak regarding the proposed operating budget? This is your opportunity to do so.
Mr...
Yes.
I have one speaker.
All right.
Mrs. Sergio Neal.
Good evening, school board members, members of the general public. My name is Sergio Neal, and I will be speaking on the proposed FY 2019-20-20 budget. I have reviewed this budget. You know, I've been in conversation with several different people about this budget. As a citizen of Porstman, it is important that we put our dollars and cents in the best direction to support public education. First of all, I would say this, I find it, you know, to be helpful that you all are proposing a raise for our teachers and staff. I think they well deserve it. I think they deserve probably 100 times of what the proposed rate is, and if that could be a possibility, I think you all would make it happen. Secondly, you know, we, you know, looking over this budget and looking at some of the additions, especially in administration, I've said this several times, you know, I can say this because I worked in administration in a school, in a private school, and we have these same conversations. As an administrator, you can, it would not just, the end would not justify the means. If your raise is two times what your support staff is, including your teachers, I'm not going to point out the exact raise. I'm quite sure you all, as school board members, have seen that raise. Even our superintendent has seen it, I'm quite sure he has. There are some increases and some services that, you know, should be explained to the public. Outside printing, one of them had a 500% increase. You know, I think we have to be smart about, you know, and to our interim public communications person, I would advise her, you know, when these things start to come out, we need to have, the public should have some definition. People that don't work in education, but yet still are taxpayers, would probably not look at some of these numbers and say, "Oh, wow, you know, why such and such?" But because I have that extra step, I'm going to ask for the public, because at the end of the day, it's our tax dollars that are funding this system on all three levels, federal, state, and local. I would strongly advise you all, and let me be clear, that next year is an election year. For those of you all that don't pay attention to this budget, it may be detrimental to your further career on this school board. You know, I think all of you wholeheartedly want the best for this school system, but at the same time, too, we need to make sure that, first of all, when we are forming budgets, that they are classroom-friendly. That's where it all starts at. Nothing else matters without your classroom teachers and your students. And if they don't have the best resources, if they don't have the best support, then everything else falls down. If we look at the trends, region-wide, public school attendance is down. We all know that. However, if you also look at the same, in the same realm of numbers, private school and home school attendance is going up. People are starting to lose faith in public education, and I, as a person who works in a private school, would tell you that, at the end of the day, I'm going to be true to myself and say, "I'm a public school advocate." They all know that. So let's be mindful, if we're going to say we promote public education, as board members, we, you know, we all work and do our best to make sure that is known to the public in our decision-making, then this budget should reflect that. So let's be clear, you know, we can do some things, and I'm not saying that all, it's all is bad, you know, but we need to maybe take another look, because I get it, costs go up. Trust me, I have these same conversations. But let's not pad the field where it doesn't need to be padded. You know, when you have teachers that are struggling to make decisions between paying a light bill and buying classroom supplies, making public pleas for citizens to bring in copy paper, that's crazy. I never in my life would have thought that we would see the day when those type of pleas come from our classroom teachers, when the public plea goes out for soap, when the classroom supply list is growing by miles every school year. Trust me, I get it, because I buy my son, who's a public school attendant, three times what's on that school supply list, because I know those teachers have students in their classrooms that can't afford, and I make sure that those teachers, whatever they need, I can take from my own supply and give to them. Those partnerships in the community that can be formed to support our schools, we don't have to, you know, we need to make sure that we are doing the best thing. And I get it, but I will give you all credit, what I've seen so far, and I'm going to say this, and I mean this wholeheartedly. I appreciate the way that you all are trying to publicly work with the city council. The negative stuff has gone away for the most part. We don't need to be in that space. Whatever the decision is made, it has to be, it is what it is, because I'm gonna go before the city council and I'm going to give them the same speech, because we can't say that we promote public education. We can't say we promote positive behavior and turn around and do the exact thing that we don't put out there. So I would appreciate if you all would take the time to look at this budget again and make sure that whatever the numbers end up being, that they are truly classroom-friendly, because like the students that came up here tonight from Churchland and Norcom, they can tell you that none of this, what they are doing, would be possible without public education here in Porstman. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Madam Pluck, do we have any other speakers?
No more registered speakers.
Do we have any speakers that would like to come to the podium and speak regarding the budget?
Good evening.
Good evening. State... Go ahead.
My name is Nicole Williams. I'm coming to you as a parent of three students of Porstman Public Schools, one being at Waters, two being at Simondsdale Elementary. I'm coming to you as a parent that has had no problems whatsoever from the teachers. They have been wonderful teachers. They have been, went above and beyond any kind of teaching job is supposed to go over. I have two that are right now, you know, in the process of taking SOLs and doing SOLs, and, you know, one of them has scored 600 on two of those SOLs, and the other one has scored a high 500. My concern is that when my daughter is taking those SOLs and she scores very well, the next two years come, and those teachers are gone. So I get very concerned when my younger daughter comes through and those teachers that afforded my older daughter a 600 are gone. Thankfully, the teachers that have come under her, they've been able to get her to a 500, and I'm very proud of that. But then my son is coming up three years later, and my daughter has again lost a wonderful, wonderful fourth-grade teacher, and that concerns me. Which brings me up to the point of the teacher raises. 3% is wonderful, but I understand that there's also a concept of the school board raises. And I'm not saying y'all don't deserve a raise. Y'all do. I have become more involved. Mr. Lamb has helped me so much through Facebook, becoming more involved. Mr. Barnes as well, he puts up Facebook Lives. I'm sure this one is up there right now. So I've gotten a lot more involved in this past two years because of those two, and I'm not saying that any other ones aren't doing what they need to do. Those are just the two that I've become involved with. And I'm not saying that you guys don't deserve a raise, but, and some of my numbers may be off, but right now, as it stands, you guys are trying to get a $4,500 raise, and per person. So at the 3% raise, the way I calculated, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the 3% raise would attribute to about $1,000 per teacher. And the way I also calculated is a teacher's going to get a 3% raise, and going from $55 to $10,000, you're about at an 80% raise. Now, I don't blame y'all. If I had the choice to vote myself an 80% raise, I would honestly do that. But in the essence of keeping these good teachers that are affording one daughter a 600, I would like the same for those teachers. I would like for you to look at the budget and find something, and the school board is wanting to be in connection with Suffolk, I get that. But even with the 3% raise that the teachers are proposing to get here, they would not be in conjunction with Suffolk. Suffolk would still be getting paid more. So if we're trying to keep up with Suffolk, I think it should be more towards the teacher pay than the school board pay, or the school board raise. If a teacher is getting approximately $1,000 extra dollars, I feel like it's only fair for the school board to get $1,000 extra dollars. But again, like I said, I went through, I love the teachers. I just want to end on this note. I know that y'all are in the trenches. I know y'all are doing the work. I'm not saying that. But on November 20th, some fellow came in my school, my kid's school, with a gun. They were on lockdown. I get a call from my daughter saying they're on lockdown, there's someone in the school with a gun, and I don't know, but I don't think any one of y'all were in there. But I do know that my daughter came to me and said their teacher, Ms. Blue Mel, kept them calm, kept them distracted, and kept them on task in what they're supposed to do. And my second-grade son, Ms... Because she kept them on task, she kept them distracted, and she knew what to do. Now, if there's anyone that deserves a raise, it's gotta be Portsmouth Public Schools teacher and more than 3%. Thank you so much.
Amen. Thank you.[612.88][612.88](applause). Do we have any more, do we have any more speakers that would like to come? Okay. The, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I was gonna save my comments regarding the school board salary until we actually voted on it.
Okay.
But since we had two speakers, I decided I'll go ahead and comment on it, the reason why I would, why I'm going to support it. To the community that's reading the budget, it may seem like we have a high increase because we are making this one-time pay increase. For those who may not know, the school board has not seen a, an increase in salary in the past 10 years. So I don't think anyone in the audience or in the community can sit and say that you would work on a job for 10 years and not get a pay raise, or even want an increase, or maybe that you don't deserve an increase. So I just want to clear the air that it was 10 years ago since the last increase, and this increase is so we can be on board with the other districts. And actually, the average amount is about 13,000 with the other divisions, that's on the same lines with us. So we are still shorting ourselves as a division and school board members. Newport News, 17,000, 17,000 for the chairman, let me just look, 17,000. Chairman, other members, 15,000. Hampton, 13,000. Other members, 11,000. Of course, Suffolk is, is, is on the same lines with, I think Suffolk is about between 10 and 12. So again, we're still shorting ourselves in Portsmouth. So like I said, I just want you guys to sit and think, would you really be on a job for 10 years and not give yourselves a raise, or go to your supervisor? If you will, please come see me at the end of the school board meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I, I just wanted to say that with regards to the, the budget, I mean, there's, there's many things that I had questions with. In fact, Dr. Bracy would know, I gave over 53 questions. And, and there's things in this, in this budget that I'm not in, in line with, with historical things. But I will say that where it seems as though that there may be lines of, of increases with administration or with other lines, outside services and so forth, those increases are a couple of things. One could be how it's coded. In, in the past, we coded certain jobs and so forth in a different category or in a different way, and now that they're coming into, under another category, it looks like there's more of an increase. That, that's, that's one. Some of these increases as well, when you look and you read, it looks like there's a large percentage, but if you look year over year, some of these increases are put back into the budget because of the cuts that were made last year in order to come up with the 2% raise from last year. So again, there's some things in this budget that I'm not real keen on, but as far as looking at the budget and you do see those high percentages, that is mostly for what it's for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman. As far as the budget is concerned, I want, am I on, or, okay.
Your honor.
I mean, I have a big voice, so I just need to make sure. We have asked several questions to the superintendent and his staff to the tune of about 75 as a board, as we have gone through this budget. The increase in the administrative line that you're talking about, I have a breakdown of every single one of them that was provided to us. Some of them are new positions, some of them are reclassified positions. The ones that look a little funky, like it's not a 3%, but it may be a 4% or 5%, and that just is because we had budgeted to higher at this number amount, but in order to get the best person available, we had to jump up their initial salary, maybe five grand. And so that is an increase that is showing up on this budget, because there's a budget and then there's the actuals. So if you, I mean, we have them and we can go over them, but I want you to know, I mean, you can come see my copy, it's marked up, it's highlighted, it's penciled, it's been emailed, it's been discussed. And so, as Mr. Lamb said, there's, there's, there's never a budget that you're 100% on, but I know what I'm 100% on is these teachers. And so even if this budget only ends up being teachers, that is going to be what I fight for, because that is what we need to do. There's a lot of things that go into teaching and 3% doesn't cover it, but when it comes down to it, I don't have a school division without teachers. So my vote tonight is yes for this budget, because I am going for these teachers at 110%. And so if that's the only thing I get, then that's what I get.[960.32][960.32](applause).
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to go back to the salary increase for school board members. When I came on this board in 2008, it was 2,500, I believe, in that year. They moved it to 5,000. And since that time, it has been the same. And I will say that city council members make 23,000 and the mayor 25,000.
Right.
And I would say that the school board works just as hard, or harder probably, because we have to cover all the schools, go to things throughout the week, through the meetings or whatever. And we are probably the lowest-paid division around. And it might look like, you know, well, it's 100% or whatever, 50%, but the fact of the matter is, there are nine of us, and if we raise it by five, nine times five is $45,000. That, that's the amount. $45,000 does not do much to cover our teacher raises. And I'm all for teacher raises, instruction, but I'm all for raises for all of our employees. Because our school system cannot run without bus drivers, without custodians, without everybody supporting the mission of getting our school, our children to school. So I will be voting on this budget, and I will be voting for this increase, because every year, and I want to make it clear, the, the, the increase for the school board is not in this budget. It cannot be in this budget cycle, because we have an election year coming up. It can only go into effect if it's voted on in 2021.
Right.
So I want to make that clear, it has nothing to do with this budget that we're, that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other comments? All right, next item. Electronic vote, consideration of religious exemption, case number 20181909. What is the board's pleasure?
For approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is, wonderful time, our monthly report, curriculum and instruction, Dr. Wynn.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patel, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. It's always my pleasure to give you the curriculum and instruction report, and I apologize for my voice tonight, because I am still recovering from something. We have a lot of wonderfulness tonight, and if you will reflect upon the written report in your board dot, you will see that this has been a very busy month for our students and staff in Portsmouth Public Schools. We had a math challenge, we had Digital Learning Day, and we had Read Across America. And we also had a number of students who participated in Model UN. And tonight, that's what we want to highlight, all of those students who had the opportunity to serve with Model United Nations, which is a simulation where high school students get to propose and debate international policy and human rights while representing an assigned country. We had delegations from Churchill and IC Norcom and Woodrow Wilson schools, and they attended a three-day simulation at Old Dominion University Model United Nations Conference, number 42. This event was held February 15th through the 17th at the Sheraton Waterside in Norfolk, and the students interacted with 1,200 students from across the country, utilizing their skills and knowledge of international foreign affairs to shape public policy. So tonight, first of all, I want to recognize all of our students and have them stand, all of our students who participated and are here, who participated in Model UN.[1227.83][1227.83](applause). We have two speakers here tonight, but before we recognize them, I want to also highlight our principals and administrators from Norcom, Wilson, and Churchill who are here, because they supported these students.[1247.58][1247.58](applause). In addition, we have, we have staff here from all three schools, and in particular, we have coaches here tonight with some of the students who participated. So we have two speakers. First, we have Amanda York, who is the daughter of Susan and Franklin York. And Amanda is a member of the student council, she's a student council president at IC Norcom. And she also participates in drama club, varsity tennis, international club, and scholastic bowl. She's the vice president of IC Norcom Senior Class, and she will be majoring in chemistry at ODU in the fall, on her way to medical school. And she's here tonight with Mr. Baker, who is a sponsor from her school.[1293.58][1293.58](applause). We also have Megan LaSoyne, who is here with her mother. She is the daughter of Hannah and Richard LaSoyne, if you'll come up. She's a junior at Woodrow Wilson High School.[1307.83][1307.83](applause). And Megan is enrolled in three AP courses and would like to attend Duke University in the future.[1317.21][1317.21](laughter). She is a member of Mew Alpha Theta, the Science Club, and Model UN, and she will be a first-generation college student. Megan and Amanda.[1328.58][1328.58](applause).
Good evening, School Board. My name is Amanda York. I am a senior at IC Norcom High School. Norcom recently participated in Model UN, representing the island nation of Sri Lanka. My friend, Amexian Bowden, and I served in the UNESCO Committee, which stands for United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization. Our main focus on Model UN Conference was the UNESCO Heritage Sites. One of the exciting things about Model UN is how other schools can take on a country's viewpoint, even if that viewpoint is different from the actual perspective of the participants. This can lead to a lot of lively discussions and debate, and sometimes argument. For instance, some other schools proposed replacing UNESCO Heritage Sites with holograms and virtual reality. Sri Lanka has eight UNESCO Heritage Sites, including the Temple of Buddha Sacred Tooth. Yes, that is a real place. So we co-signed with other countries to oppose that proposal, arguing that Sri Lanka and other nations need to preserve their history and culture, as well as ensuring that tourists still visit the island. These sites are worth continuing to protect. The Model UN Conference as a whole features many different committees that address a variety of pressing real-world issues, from prohibiting nuclear weapons to debating about the effectiveness of economic sanctions. Other two Sri Lankan delegates collaborated with other countries on a proposal supporting the use of genetically-modified organisms to bolster the world's food supply. Although this proposal failed, it is still a great experience to be able to research a nation's perspective on any issue and argue from that perspective. Model UN is an excellent event for us to be able to flex our critical thinking skills. It also provides quality opportunities to interact with schools from all across the state and students who will soon be our peers in our ongoing education. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to participate in Model UN. If I wasn't graduating in June, I would look forward to doing again next year. Thank you.[1450.83][1450.83](laughter).
Hello. I'm here today with my fellow delegate, Melanie Panetta, who along with four others, came together to represent North Korea in Model UN. We are pleased to be here to give a presentation of our experience at the Old Dominion Model UN United Nations Conference, and to share what we have gained from this delegation and hope to gain from others in the future. I would like to start off this speech with some background information to affirm the significance of Model UN as an important club for students such as myself. When I first entered high school, I was selected to be in Woodrow Wilson High School's Center of Excellence. One of the requirements for graduating this program is participating in a club that involves dealing with international affairs and other forms of community service. The option to be able to participate in this club while being in such an amazing program was a deciding factor in my attendance of this school. Model UN has always attracted my attention, because understanding the world and learning to make peace with other countries is important for our future. Our generation must learn to delegate and speak calmly to make change, because we are the next generation of senators, lawyers, ambassadors, and presidents. Now, in the time I have remaining, please allow me to share with you our experience at Oda Monk, how much we have learned and how much we hope to learn in the future. We represented North Korea, which is a communist country located in East Asia. We were a part of the General Assembly, where we were very interactive, learning the whole process of a United Nations Assembly, including how to cooperatively assemble and pass position papers. We were worried at first, but the chair and the rest of the delegates were very helpful and informative. The General Assembly experience widened our knowledge, challenged us to work tirelessly the entire weekend, which resulted in our confidence being strengthened. Again, I would like to thank the school board for inviting us to present our experience, and I sincerely request our continued participation in the Model UN exercises. We are already excited to attend Oda Monk 43, and we cannot wait to put our newfound knowledge forward to be more successful in the next delegation. And who knows, maybe we will be able to win a prize or two. Thank you.[1570.33][1570.33](applause).
Also, I wanted to recognize Mr. Harrington, who's here, he is Megan's coach at Woodrow Wilson.[1587.87][1587.87](applause). And I have to acknowledge Mr. William Hicks, who is our coordinator of social studies, who is responsible for getting us connected once again with Model UN.[1598.33][1598.33](applause). So thank you. Any questions?
No. Excellent. All right, the next item on the agenda are resolutions. We will take each 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3 consensus vote. The first one is consideration of a resolution naming Claude's Lawn Care, Identity Marketing and Promotional LLC, and Agape Counseling and Therapeutic Services to the 2019 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll. This is part of the BSBA Board of Distinction, and we are very proud to have, to nominate these three businesses as part of our, our minority on business partnership. And the resolution reads, "Whereas Portsmouth Schools, Public Schools, and Local Businesses are an integral part of communities in Hampton Roads, and whereas many local businesses play a critical role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly-educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future, therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board names Claude's Lawn Care, Identity Marketing and Promotional LLC, and Agape Counseling and Therapeutic Services Incorporated to the 2019 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, in appreciation for their support of, of their community and our public school system. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be made part of the school board's official minutes and signed by the honorable members of the Portsmouth School Board, and this will be signed by each member of the school board." The next, the next resolution is consideration of a resolution recognizing Public School Volunteer Week, April the 22nd to the 26th. Dr. Kumarti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vice Chair Member of the Board, it's Dr. Bracy. I present this resolution for your consideration. Whereas our school volunteers and our partners in education are great mainstays in helping us achieve and maintain our shared goal of making the public schools of Portsmouth the very best that they are, and whereas they generously share their outstanding talents and unique abilities in the schools and are making lasting contributions to the education of young people in our great city, our great commonwealth, and our great nation, and whereas on a daily basis, concerned citizens continue to augment the efforts of school personnel by contributing freely. by contributing freely of their free-time talents and resources to advance the cause of public education here in our fair city, and whereas their diligence and their exemplary service can never be, can ever be, excuse me, a model for all who aspire to contribute to the Commonwealth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board extend its heartfelt appreciation and enormous gratitude of the citizenry of Portsmouth to all volunteers and partners in education for their perseverance, their zeal, and their many hours of endeavor rendered on behalf of youth in this historic seaport city. And be it further resolved that all school division personnel be encouraged to observe Public School Volunteer Week during the period April seven through thirteen, twenty nineteen, as a tangible means of demonstrating our profound gratitude to this group of individuals and organizations for their invaluable contribution. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be made a part of this body's official minutes and properly, and the properly executed copy be sent to all schools and administrative offices throughout the division.
Thank you. Would you read the next resolution? Consideration of a resolution recognizing School Library Month?
Yes, sir. Whereas April twenty nineteen has been designated the thirty-fourth Annual National School Library Month, and whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge, and whereas school libraries provide materials that will develop literacy, cultural, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards, and whereas school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and beliefs of religious, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups and their contributions to the American and world heritage, and whereas school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure, and whereas school libraries provide materials that meet individuals' needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served, and whereas the library, school libraries are fun places for students to go, and all students deserve well-managed libraries to provide for free expression and access to ideas, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board and the Division Superintendent of Portsmouth Public Schools declare the month of April twenty nineteen as School Library Month, and thereby urge each of the Portsmouth schools to adopt similar resolution.
Thank you. Board members, we're be, we're going to be voting on eight point one, eight point two, and eight point three. What is the board's pleasure?
motion for approval.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any, any discussion? Here are no discussion. Board members, please make your vote by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kermody. The next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes of February the seventh, twenty nineteen, and February the twenty-first, twenty nineteen. What is the board's pleasure?
motion for approval.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Here are no discussion. Board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk? Mr. Lamp? There you go.
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. All right, the next item is public comment. The first is non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes.
Okay.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it's your turn to address the School Board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the School Division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Ms. Kiana Crittenden?
I'm Dr. Bracy. My name is Marvin Crittenden. I'm here with my wife, Kiana, regarding facility fees for renting school gyms and regarding youth sports. I'm with the travel team, travel ball team, Team Loaded Seven Five Seven, which is a nonprofit fifth-grade basketball organization. I've been a volunteer in Portsmouth since I moved to the city in two thousand and four. While, while doing that, on active duty, and now employed at Norfolk Naval Shipyard. I volunteered with various sports organizations throughout the years, which having a nineteen-year-old now all the way to an eight-year-old. And I served as assistant coach on Wilson's basketball team for three years. Portsmouth is rich with talent and deserves to compete on an advanced level, and this is what my team, this is what we offer. We have an excellent working relationship with Dr. Williams and the guys at, the staff at Victory Elementary, which we've been there for two years. Last year, I charged my parents twelve forty-five a month to rent the gym, and my wife and I covered anything extra and also the fund raised. This year, we got to receive the, we received a bill for three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. I only have ten children on my team so far and any kids that we recruit, so maybe we get up to twelve. And with that, if we, whatever we raised with fundraising and any extra, we have to cover. So with that being said, I would rather my team, rather than doing like we did a cup fundraiser and that, they took sixty to seventy-five percent of the money that we make. So when you do all, all of those things, you still end up not really making what you need. So I would propose that Team Loaded, which is a strong, a strong organization, Team Loaded Seven Five Seven in Virginia, and especially in this area, we could offer camps, anything like that, to bring into the younger children. Because I know everyone sees I C Norcom winning and what they've done, but it starts from a young age. It's the foundations, the fundamentals. So, so I can read this stuff, but for me, it's about development and using sports as a catapult to keep some of these kids that, until they start playing basketball, they, they're not doing too well in school or attendance. Now the coaches has an influence over them, motivating them guys. So we would love to volunteer with camps, anything you guys need us to do, but I'm just looking for a way to lessen our bill because you have some kids that can play, but they don't always have the financial means. And that falls on me and my family. And I think that's what separates me and Team Loaded from a lot of other organizations. They're about winning. We want to win, but I will, what I get joy out of is looking at a child and saying, we worked on that. You know what I'm saying? Oh, we, oh, we did that. We did that yesterday. So when they take it to the game like this weekend when we play at Boo Williams, when they do a certain move or something like that, you'd be like, okay, you know what I'm saying? We're getting somewhere. So what I ask you guys is please look at Team Loaded Seven Five Seven, we're at Victory Elementary. Please look at, if there's any way that you guys can help us to lessen our bill. But it's not just for me, it's for the kids that we work with. All right? Thank you.
Hold up just a minute. We have some board members. Ms. Atkinson?
And I just want to confirm, the three thousand nine ninety-nine, that was custodial fees?
Gym fees and custodial fees.
Okay. And for what time period again?
Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Six to eight.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Reverend Patello?
How you doing? I just want to first thank you for what you do for the children. I definitely understand how it is to have to come out of your own pocket to, to fund those activities. I'm not sure what can be done in fairness with all the other leagues that we have also.
Right.
But I will say, if you don't mind, send me before you leave, I wouldn't mind helping you out personally with that.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and speaking to us. I just want to say personally, I've worked with the organization, and he was actually trained my son before, so I know what he means when he says he comes to the game and say, I taught him that yesterday. For those of you that don't know, I do run a organization myself, and sometimes fees can be detrimental to a child coming out and playing in an organization. When you run an organization, it's hard to supplement those fees, and a lot of the times it does come out of your pocket. But you know, the goal is to help everyone, but sometimes you really can't with some of the things that you have to pay. And I think he would tell you the same thing, is that you don't want to turn any kid away, but sometimes you have to. But you also don't want to be that person that when a kid, something happens to a kid because they wanted to be in your program, but financially they couldn't do it, and then you hear about them outside practicing dribbling, and if something happens to them, they get shot or something to that nature. So I, I would like for us to see if we can look into something where we can help organizations out, I mean legit organizations that have their stuff together, not just fly-by-night ones, but legit organizations.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have other speakers?
If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
All right. The next item is a public comment on board agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mr. Sergio Neal on item thirteen point three.
Good evening again, Board. Since this is specifically for you all, again, this discussion is on the school board raise. And let, let me be perfectly clear. I, I would not, to remember Atkinson's point, I wouldn't ask anybody to stay on a job for ten years and not get some type of raise, but let, let me also be clear on this. If we're going to be true leaders and a reflection of our team, and our subordinate team, which would be our teachers and staff and our school system, to Ms. Boyd, to Ms. Nicole's point, the raise should match what they get. Instead of a forty-five percent or a hundred percent increase, or eighty percent, or whatever number you want to put on it, why not give you all a three percent? And I get it. You all say you all want to be in line with Suffolk, but let's be perfectly clear, Suffolk has almost two times the school's sports lab. Their division is larger than Portsmouth.
No.
If, if not, hold on, let me go to the numbers. Let me check. Their, their division is larger than Portsmouth. Let's just be clear.
No.
It's not?
No.
Okay, let me check my numbers again.
Yeah.
Anyway. Right. Okay, so what they-
A landmass, but not-
They have more people, but yet still they, they have a larger tax base, so they, you know.
No.
I mean, they have, you know, so they, they have the money to get that ten thousand, put it like that, however you want to look at it.
They have land.
The population of the city, the population of the city of Portsmouth and the population of Suffolk are totally, are different. They have more taxpayers than Portsmouth does. So with that being said, they can afford that raise, they can afford what they make. If we look at Portsmouth and our tax base, you know, can we afford a hundred percent increase? And it doesn't matter when it takes effect, because my thing would be, and this is probably more for the General Assembly, how can you allow a district to vote on a budget that's not even going to be in effect for two years? I don't know what the-
Because that's the law.
I know, and I know, and I get it. That's why I said, that would be my thing. I would ask for them, they need to look at that, because we don't know, who knows what twenty twenty may, twenty twenty-one may hold? Right, it may be a totally different ballgame. I will also say this, as me, you know, personally, if, if I were a school board member, first of all, I work not one, but two jobs, both in management, both in administration. This right here wouldn't be about the money. I would forego my whole entire salary, and I can do that comfortably with no problem, because see, at the end of the day, serving my community, you can't put a dollar amount on that. I can guarantee you right now, I would turn that check right back over. Because see, my full-time jobs cover what I have to do personally. My passion for serving this city, you can't put a dollar amount on. So, and I get it, I'm not saying that that's something to brag about, because that's just what it is. You know, what, what, because if it was me, I'm like, you know, I'm not up here just to be making money, I'm up here to let people know that I'm contributing to my community. A lot of times, people sit home and complain, and, oh, this is not going right, that's not going right, but when it comes to sitting on one of these boards or commissions or anything like that, you don't hear, you don't hear anything from them. It, it's not about the money. Trust and believe, if, 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 now on my regular job, would I be there for ten years to make the same thing? No, but I've been fortunate enough to be blessed on my job for two years and been given a raise three times. So I get it, but that's my personal job. But serving this city is a different thing. A lot of people don't know, I volunteer a lot of my time. You can go pull, you can go pull Portsmouth's record right now, especially in their Recreation Department. I'm quite sure I have more volunteer hours than some of the people I've ever had in their life. I do that because I love this city. So I get it, you know, we, we can talk numbers, and my numbers are not always right, I'm not saying, I know somebody could be like, oh, my God, you said Suffolk had more, had more schools than we do. I, I get it, I'm ready for the Facebook post, trust and believe it, because I'm a man of my word, I can stand behind my mistakes. But at the same time, so I can guarantee you this, that nobody, nobody on this earth with, with an ounce of true dedication would be able to morally accept more of an increase than the people that work beneath them, if they are all struggling together. I have taken my own personal salary on both of my jobs, told both of my superiors, my superiors, that I would not take an increase unless the people beneath me add an increase. And if it came down to mine or theirs, it was theirs that came first. So let's be clear about what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shumey?
To speak to the salary notion that's on the table or the discussion that keeps coming up, I will say upfront, I will be voting for, and let me tell you why. The teachers and the board members here have fought tirelessly over the last, I can't even tell you how many years, for the teachers to get raises. The teachers have consistently received raises, whether it's through cuts or whatever other means, however, the board has not. So I don't want it to be a misinformed situation where we're receiving raises consistently, and that's not the case. This will be the first time in years that the board will receive a raise. However, the board has consistently fought to get raises to not just teachers, but to all of the staff members in the Portsmouth Public School System. Another thing I want to bring to everyone's attention, yes, we are up here as board members, but this is not the only thing that we do. We may have a few that are retired, but a lot of us do have regular jobs, not even to the point of we also belong to additional organizations on top of being a board member, and those organizations do not pay as well. So I don't think it should be an issue that we would want to get a couple of dollars more to be able to be substantiated for the work that we do, because you also have to realize, in order for us to sit up here on this dais, we have to run an election. And I understand that you stated that you take money out of your pocket, but we've all done the same thing as well when it comes to running for office. That is extremely expensive. None of that is cheap. You have to come out of your pocket if you do not raise the funds to do so. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Atkinson? Okay. The only, the only comment that I'm going to make, because I ran in two thousand and ten, fourteen, and eighteen, and my desire, Mr. Neal, has always been, and I will tell you, this board and other boards that I have served with, the number one priority is always about teachers, and always about our students. And when we, when board members make a comment about the fact that, you know, when we run for a public office, it costs us just as much as it does for city council members to run for office, and it's very expensive. And as Ms. Williams has already brought out, and I'm glad that she did, that for many years, when she got on the board, board members only received twenty-five hundred dollars. And then, ten years ago, it increased to five thousand dollars. So when we're, we're saying that we're going to, we want to be as least comparable with Suffolk, which is ten thousand dollars, that's not, it may seem a lot of money, that may seem a lot of increase at one time, but that's, that's over ten years. But rest assured that this board is committed first to teacher salaries. Last year, the city council did not, did not allocate any money, as you know, and you spoke, to funding the two percent. And this board, we dug in and we sacrificed and we cut programs and personnel to give our- our teachers two percent. We have always done that, and we will continue to do that. Now, three percent, we're going to see where a city council comes up, because you said just a few minutes ago, this is a city, this is a, twenty twenty is an election year. Now, we're going to find out if city council, when they run, and they've run in the past, and they've been for public education, but those are words, and you have not seen them advocate for public education, other than when they want your vote. But this board is always, and will always be committed first, to our students and our employees to make sure they have the best. But I don't think it's unrealistic for this board to request, after ten years, a salary, a salary increase, and I will be voting for that, for that increase, because I think this board deserves it. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers? No other speakers. All right, next item, human resources, and Mr. Ziegler.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to present to you the Human Resources Report for the month of March 2019. Couple of items of interest in there, we did host a, with the, along with the Benefits Office, a retirement seminar for interested employees. We had over fifty employees attend, but before you panic over that number, we had a wide range of experience levels there, from first-year teachers all the way up to very experienced teachers. And we covered topics like VRS, health insurance in retirement, saving for retirement, and banking. And I'd like to thank our senior supervisor, Jessica Durand, and our benefit supervisor, Sharon Plummer, and our benefits associated, associate, Anita Bishop, for their work on this project. It was very well received, and we will be repeating it for our employees. We had senior supervisor Jessica Duran and HR specialist Sonia Harrell presented at Norfolk State University to education majors who were in their senior year on the importance of branding yourself professionally and how to develop your resume and prepare yourself for education interviews. And we hope that many of those folks already have. We hope that they will continue exploring positions with us and ultimately come on board as certified and licensed staff. And then finally, I have an article coming out in the 2020 Job Search Handbook for Educators entitled, Seven Mistakes You're Making on Your Electronic Application, and that will be published in the spring of 2020 with nationwide coverage. The department also attended six job fairs in the past month, all the way from North Carolina up to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where we go next week, including University of Kentucky, Virginia State, and Virginia Commonwealth University, among others. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Ziegler, congratulations on your publication. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
I would also like to say congratulations to Ms. Duran and Ms., and I always say her name wrong, but it's Harrell, Harold.
Harrell, yes.
I always do that. I would be interested in seeing if those two ladies would not do an informative session for some of our teachers, as far as professionalism and branding themselves, because some of the conversations that I've had with just the public in general about how they see teachers as unprofessional, or as, you know, being demeaning when they don't realize that they're being demeaning, and it's just always having to make sure that you're the professional first, because even though I'm a mom, and even though I have, I have another full-time job, I'm always school board member so-and-so. In the same way, once you're a teacher, you're always Mrs. Hines, or you're always Mrs. Duncan, or whatever, and so people have a hard time taking the personality out of the profession.
Sure.
And I think sometimes some of our teachers, not just our teachers, but teachers in general, are sometimes the detriment to their own profession. And so I would really like to see our teachers be reminded that they are professional and that they are deserving of monies and respect that they deserve, and not losing it because of one heated Facebook post, or Twitter post, or what have you. So I would like to see if you could bring that in-house, maybe talk with Dr. Bracy and see what we can do with that, but that's just my, that would be my recommendation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, if there are no other questions, Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board to please entertain a motion to approve the employee transaction report for March 2019 as presented in your board package.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, never mind. Board members, please indicate your preference, electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Parent.
Ma'am?
There's someone that wants to speak. Sharice is getting her information.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
There's someone else that wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
And Sharice is getting her information. Ms. T. Williams?
Good evening, board. My name is Ms. T. Williams. I'm the Effingham Street YMCA Youth Director. I want to say that I'm truly pleased with the board, your interaction at the schools with the children, I see you all over the city of Portsmouth. I came to the STEM program, I believe it was a few weeks ago, held at the Woodrow Wilson High School. I saw your faces, the children, the parents interacting, it was really, really nice. Your social media, as the children say, is dope. I follow some of you. I appreciate that. I have come to pretty much all of the school board meetings for years, and I'll always speak up about our teachers. But I want to say that I do truly believe that you guys do deserve a raise. No one, not even myself, and I am a bit advocate for children, for teachers, I spend out of my own money as well, that's what we do when we love our children.
Right.
But it is crazy to believe that you will work and not get a raise. And city of Portsmouth, we have to come up with other cities. We truly do. So I can't vote for it, but if I could, I would. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for being in the city. Eyes are always on you guys. I love the fact that you go out to read across America with your little doctor suits hats on, going out to the schools. My child grew up a little bit in Portsmouth, then he went over to Suffolk. He's grown. I don't have any children, other than my Y babies. I go to the PTA meetings. I'm a PTA mom, even though I don't have any children. If I could vote for you guys to get a raise, I would. Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? All right, that's it. The next item is consideration of the financial budget report, February 2019. Board members, you've had a copy of that. What is your pleasure?
Motion for approval.
Motion's been made, and second, do you have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Electronic vote. It's unanimous.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Parent, and with the hour getting late, I will be brief. First of all, would like to give a special thanks to Mr. Falk, our CFO, and Mr. Duran for their work on the budget that's been, that has been shared with us, that's before you all to vote, and the entire finance department. Thank you for the dedication, the overtime that you don't get paid for, to make that happen, the long evenings, but it's definitely a task, but it's worthwhile. And I know a lot of these numbers may look a little different, because we, one of the things that you have to consider is that we have a new CFO, and he has a different way of doing things and putting the budget together, so it's not going to look like it has in the past. So that's something we have to get accustomed to. So I'm not saying no way is wrong, there is no wrong way to do it, it's just the presentation is different, because I put my own spin on something that I do. So I think that confuses a lot of people as well, so I just wanted to throw that, throw that out there. Also want to recognize one of our principals, well, actually two of them, that just completed their doctorate, Dr. Barbara Kimsey at Churchland Middle School is now Dr. Kimsey. She, yeah, that's- She received her doctorate from the College of William and Mary, so congratulations to Dr. Kimsey. And I don't know if we ever recognize Dr. Williams, Patricia Williams, principal at Mount Hermans, she pleaded her doctorate from ODU back in December. So I definitely wanted to recognize them. One other thing, the last couple of weeks, the CNI team, Dr. Win, Dr. Cromartie and I have met with the content coordinators. Last week, we met with the first-year principals for data discussion, just to see exactly where they are, so we could get a pulse on where, looking at the numbers all across the board to see where they are, and at this point, what is, what is it that we can do to help them as we come down to the finish line, getting prepared for the SOL. So very informative meeting for us, as well as for them, to be able to have them share their data with us. What are, what are those numbers, and what does it mean to them? And that's something that we will look at as we go forward in the next school year. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the school board's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2019 and 20. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made, and second, there's a second. Do I have any more discussion?
Who's the second?
Mr. Reverend Patillo.
Thank you.
Hearing no more discussion. Board, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm so sorry.
I know we don't want to belabor this, but too long, but I do have three things that I think are important that we get on record in saying as far as this budget is concerned. And I don't know if Dr. Bracy wants to answer these, or if you want to defer, but do you want me to give them all in one order? Do you want me to go question by question? Because I'm looking for an explanation and the state kick in. How much money is the state giving to us as a part of this individual teacher raise? Number two, explain the loss of state revenues if we do not give this raise. And number three, can we clarify the extra, or the extra ask that we are asking for state, I mean, from the city? Because we do have extra state revenues that are coming in, and so there's two numbers out there floating. So I want to be sure that it is on record. Number one, explain how the state is kicking in for raises. Number two, what happens if we do not get it? And number three, what is our ask in addition to city council to cover all of that? And I just think that needs to be on record, and we've discussed it, but I think one final explanation before we go through this process is needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Falk, is he ready to answer it?
Yes, ma'am. Your first question was, what was the amount that we were receiving from the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully you can read my chicken spread.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, school board members. Ms. Parent, Ms. Patillo, Dr. Bracy. The way the school, the General Assembly approved the budget, they approved a three percent raise in their budget. So the school board would have to give a three percent raise this year, well, excuse me, they approved a five percent raise over two years. We gave a two percent raise in FY eighteen nineteen this year, so we would have to give a three percent raise in order to accept the General Assembly's revenue for the next year. So the General Assembly, by doing that, has said, if you give a certain percentage raise, you will get a certain percentage of revenue. Now, if you give me one second, the General Assembly is giving Portsmouth Public Schools for the compensation supplement, two-point-seven million dollars to cover the five percent raise over two years. So that was your first question, correct, Ms. Hines? The second question is, if we do not give a three percent raise, what happens? So we have to give a one percent raise to make the three percent that they mandated, but if we did not give a, the additional raise, we would not receive the revenue. So we have to give it, at least a three percent raise to receive that revenue, and if we did not, we would not receive the two-point-seven million dollars in the revenue if we didn't give a raise. And then, your third question is, what is the dollar amount that we're asking for from the city in addition? That dollar amount this year that we're asking for from the city is three million, one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars in additional funds to fund the FY two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget as presented.
Okay, thank you. Can I, can I follow up with one, please?
You got, you got four?
Thank you. So the, the raise on the school system, to match this two points, five, two-point-seven is two-point-six that we have to come up with?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we don't give the two-point-six, we leave two-point-seven on the table, and it goes back to the state?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I just want to say, with this budget, I would like to thank Dr. Bracy and his team. For those who don't know, Dr. Bracy sat down with us, with each board member, and we went over what we would like to see in the budget and our needs. So I just want to say thank you for listening, especially with the alternatives to suspension. We're going to have ISS coordinators through the substitutes in each of our thirteen elementary schools, so that's going to reduce the out-of-school suspensions a lot with the ISS implemented, and the fact that we increased our PBIS thirty-four percent. Last week, I attended a PBIS basketball game that was put on by Brighton and Parkview Elementary, and I mean, that game was packed, like a high school game. So they are definitely, that's just one situation, but they are definitely using those funds in the best way they can. So thank you for listening and providing alternatives to suspension in the budget.
Okay. Seeing no more discussion? Oh, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and not trying to prolong it, but I just wanted to make sure the funding that the state gives is for the SOQ positions.
Yes.
And the, the extra ask that we're asking city council would cover raises for our cafeteria, bus drivers, everybody. That's the additional ask. And the SOQ-funded positions, standards of quality, they're teachers and teacher types, and not all teachers. It might be half of our teachers.
Right.
So I want to make that clear.
Mr. Lamb? Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. And like Ms. Williams says, I don't want to belittle the conversation or extend it. As I said earlier, I had a lot of questions that needed to be answered, and I also had questions and comments on the earlier side of this. This is seventy, seventy-two, fifty-three, actually, and I probably had a little more. This is difficult, because I, I, I think if we could, we, if we could give more than three percent, I think we should, if we could. And, and that if we could, would be with regards to cutting things out of categories that's funded in here, and also going to city council and asking for more funds as well besides the total two-point-six. There were some questions that I raised earlier in the earlier session that I think needs to be addressed before we move forward with, with the future of how we do business. And so with that, well, and of course, as Ms. Atkinson had said, with our meetings that we had with the superintendent, we had our meetings, and, you know, we sat down and we had very frank, and, and I told him where I stood historically, and where I stood with this budget as well. And so with that, I'll be voting accordingly.
Seeing no more comments, board members indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Eight yes votes, one no. It passes.
Thank you. Dr. Bracy, you have a budget. You can now present to Dr. Pat, City Council.
Yes, sir.
The next item, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hines?
For those of you that are interested, all interested parties, the city manager's giving her budget overview at four PM on Monday.
Right.
So for those of us that work, you know, on other sides of the waters, it's going to be difficult for us to get here. However, it will be at 4:00, and I might be scooting in at 10:00 after, but I will be here to hear that. So I look forward to seeing you guys, too.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a board member's salary adjustment to become effective January 1st, 2021. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made and second, do we have any discussion? Ms. Hines?
I'm sorry. I know, I'm, I'm taking-
You're going to make me work my heart of, fracture of arms?
I'm sorry. I'm helping out your physical therapist at this point.
Ah, you are. Tell him, thank you. Thank you. I need it.
I would like to make an alternate motion that we table this item until we have finalized this budget so that we can ensure that our teachers get a raise. And then so I just think that it's fair that we ensure a raise for them in this contentious season, and it would be my, my wish, and I don't know what the will of the board is, is to table this until a later date.
Second.
So there's, your motion is to table, and there is a second. Do we have any? Well, we've got to vote on, we've got to vote on this motion first before we can vote on the motion.
Right, this minute, we're going to vote on the table?
Yes, we have to vote on that motion first, and then we have to-
And then we go back to the original motion. Okay.
Ms. Atkinson?
Okay.
Ms. Atkinson?
Oh, I just want to say to the board members again, this raise is not until a different fiscal year budget. So my vote is going to be no to table it. We've been tabling this for four months, so I don't think there's anything that we can discuss regarding it.
Okay. Reverend Patillo?
Yeah, just to be certain, what date does this have to be approved by or for it to go into effect?
December 31st.
January 2021?
December 31st.
I'll have to take a look at that.
It'll have to be approved this, I, my understanding it had to be approved this year.
This year, because next year is an election.
That's correct.
Yeah.
No. It has to be this year.
Chair, Chairman Parent?
Yes.
I, I think, and of course, I know the attorney's going to check into it, but I think in our discussions earlier, it had to do with, we had to vote on this before December 31st of 2019.
That's right. Yes, that's right. All right, board members, we're voting to table, first, we're voting to table the issue, the salary adjustment for school board members. Motion's already been made and, and second, so board members indicate your preference. Madam Clerk?
Seven yes, I'm sorry, seven no votes, two yes votes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to vote on the original motion, which is, I'll state it again, consideration of a board member, of a board member's salary adjustment to become, become, become effective January 1, 2021. What is the board's pleasure?
Hold on, say-
We've already motioned. Now you're ready to vote. Please make your preference.
Six yes votes, three no. It passes.
Right. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the new middle school site. We've had an earlier discussion this evening. We need to vote this evening on this so that the superintendent and the city manager can begin moving forward. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made and second, do we have any discussion? Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. We did have a discussion earlier in the earlier meeting. It was a lively discussion, to say the least. I, I do share the sentiments of, of some of our, my colleagues with regards to, I think that, you know, we've had a limited scope of conversation with regards to this. There was a whole discussion about, with regards to the city picking the, the location, and then they put it up for a vote, and then they took it off at their last city council meeting, and then it's put in our laps here this evening. And I, I just, in, in my mind, I'm thinking as a school board and as a school board member, that should be a discussion with regards to the location as well. And I think it's something that both bodies, the whole bodies, should be having a discussion and a healthy discussion with regards to this, as opposed to it just coming up on an item and then we vote on it.
Okay. Reverend Patillo?
Thank you. I just wanted to restate some of what I said earlier in our earlier session. I'm, I'm not a huge fan of this project. I do recognize the need to have our sixth graders out of elementary school and put into a middle school, but I have an issue with, we have not been able to come together as two bodies to address how to fund needs such as teacher salaries, alternative education, alternative placement for our students that need it, and other areas of need. I believe that that conversation was easier to come together on and it costs less money to do it, but we can all of a sudden now come together to fund a huge project, such as a middle school, that I have an issue with. I will vote for the project only because of the need to take our students out of elementary school, but I would just state again, I really feel as though we should address other needs first before doing this, especially with our teacher salaries. Building a new middle school is not going to keep our teachers from leaving Portsmouth. So we still have an issue that we have to tackle after the school is built. Outside of that, there was a, a comment made a couple of weeks ago in a work session by Councilman Nathan Clark. He stated in a liaison meeting that it was stated that we would be willing to close the school to build a middle school. That was not true.
Right.
Myself, nor Mr. Parent, made that statement at all, and there's no way that I would even agree to anything like that without even consulting the entire board and having studies done. So that was just an untruth that was told, and I want to be on the record to make that clear and plain on this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. At, Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Like I said in the earlier session, I'm a little torn with this vote. It, it definitely is a tough one, but like I said earlier, I feel that we do need a new middle school. We do need to switch back to middle school being sixth grade through eighth grade. But like I said, with, with the city manager that we have now, I don't think we have no alternative. We were only presented with one location, which is a big disappointment for me. So I feel like if I vote no to this location, then there, then she's not even going to consider a new middle school. So, so I'm torn and, and I, and I just ask the members of the community, if you're invested in Portsmouth, then I encourage you to email the city manager, be more involved with not just the school board meetings, but also the city council meetings as well, because who we put in positions can affect a lot of departments, a lot of boards. And, and this is one situation where the city manager definitely screwed us, and this is my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have any more discussion? Seeing none, board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. And you, you're voting on the site. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Eight yes votes, one no. It passes.
Thank you. The last item is discussion, board members' comments. All right, Ms. Hines, and then Ms. Barnes.
Thank you. I, I, I want to give kudos to one of our CTE programs. My mom called a company earlier this week to get an estimate to have a tree taken down, taken, you know, limbs out. And the gentleman that showed up at her door was young, was energetic, was very knowledgeable and very passionate about what he did. And so as she questioned him, as, you know, a mom does, because this, you know, he's like 24, so mom thinks she's mom to everybody, she begins to question him, and his name's Bobby. And she's like, well, where'd you go to school? Are you from around here? And he's like, yeah, I went to Churchland, and I really fell in love with horticulture through the horticulture program at Churchland High School. And he left Churchland High School and went to Virginia Tech, and for anybody who's been around any length of time, you know exactly who I'm talking about. It's, it's Mr. Nance's son. But she was very grateful to have somebody that was as energetic and as passionate and that we were able to tap into that when he was a student, and for him to come back and be working in Hampton Roads and, and doing work here is something that you, you need to hear about. So I wanted to give kudos to our horticulture program before it was a really, really big, big thing, you know, and before we talked about it seemingly every, you know, week. But I thought we needed to hear the story after they leave us and what they're doing in our community. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the Churchland Horticulture Program. Just so you guys know, we do create, we create careers there, so it is a true CTE program. So thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Barnes?
I just want to talk about some of the things that I've been doing around the school sys, well, doing around, going around to see in our school system. We have a lot of great things going on in Portsmouth Public Schools. I think it's important that we tell our story. We had a STEM expo. That was amazing. It was a lot of people to come out to that. I took the kids out, they really enjoyed it. I participated in the green screen. Some, it was a green screen event. I was actually being chased by a bear or something in it, so I have that video on my page. Also, we had the robotics competition this past weekend. A lot of people came out, a lot of kids there were way smarter than us. Today, Churchland Middle School has a program called GPS, Gentlemen Pursuing Success, and I actually had the opportunity to go out and speak to them today. That was a good bunch. I want to thank Mr. Garcia for what he's doing over there with that program. They're volunteering their time. Also, with my 6'5" body, I participated in the Brighton and Parkview, sponsored by PBIS basketball game. I ran up the court one time and I was kind of ready to go. But that was a major event. It was a lot of people that attended. And also, Lakeview and Hodges Manor played tonight in another basketball game sponsored by PBIS. And from the pictures that I saw on Facebook, there was a lot of people in attendance, which made me want to say we should really look into elementary sports, because that's something unique that we can have in Portsmouth and also introduce kids to something that they may not usually participate in.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Schumak?
Ms. Schumak.
Schumak?
Schumak.
Schumak?
I love you still. Yes, just to piggyback, those were great events, the STEM event, PBIS, the robotics, I attended all three, and they were just excellent events to attend. And hopefully, if you didn't make it this year, please make it out next year. Really quickly, I want to say thank you to Ms. Lucretia White and Ms. Exum at Churchland Primary and Intermediate School. I'll be there tomorrow for their career day, representing Portsmouth Commonwealth Attorney's Office, not necessarily school board, but we're, we're going to be represented there as well as other entities as well. So thank you so much for all that you do for the children. This will be my second year participating in the career day.
Thank you, Mrs. Schumak.
Love you much.
Any other comments from board members? The last item is the adjournment. Do we have a motion? Thank you very much.